I noticed today some people in my yard, and I was trying to figure what they were doing. Well, the county assessor has hired someone to go around and basically measure up everybody's yards and the house because this is their three years as they start working for next year's property tax valuation. So if you see somebody in your yard and you're wondering what's going on, they do have permission to be here. They have a bright green lime green cover on their phones, a blue jacket, and I think they go by MIPS. And so if somebody asks, that's what they're doing. So I did check with Eric and got the information that it's all okay because you know, this day and age, they leave a sticker on your door and it's got the little QR code. Well, you never know where those lead. Anyway, now onto the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member's sole request. Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receiving place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receiving place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of the regular meeting October 20th, 2025 is on file in the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of Tracer's report of claims in the amount of $2,115,383.27. Item F, approval of Invision Landscapes LLC claims in the amount of $840. Item G, approval of Boswell Report of Claims in the amount of $5,515.62. Item H, approval of BPW Report of Claims in the amount of $1,089,554.74. Item I, approval of change order number one, increase in the amount of $15,752.47 and the final pay request number two in the amount of $375,863.63 to Catheter and Sons Construction Incorporated for the Mill and Overlay Paving Project 2025 as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item J, approval of change order number five, decrease in the amount of $3,857.20 and final pay request number five in the amount of $29,013.63 to Emmy Collins Contracting Company Incorporated for the Beatrice Lincoln Street Improvements as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item K, approval of pay request number three in the amount of $227,733.20 for Van Kirk Brothers Contracting for the 2025 Crowe Crossing Edition Project as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item L, approval of pay request number two in the amount of $430,115.71 to Van Kirk Brothers Contracting for the 2025 Heritage Heights Project as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item M, approval of the final pay request number two in the amount of $68,950 to McGill Asbestos Abatement LLC for the Dempster Asbestos Abatement. Item N, approval of the funding request for the Beatrice Senior Center in the amount of $10,000 for the installation of new carpet as recommended by the Board of Beatrice Plus Advisory Board. Item O, resolution number 7653, executing contract number 25-UGPR-91 between the City and Western Area Power Administration known as WAPA, allowing the resale of renewable energy certificates as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item P, resolution number 7654, executing any and all documents necessary to terminate the November 4, 2019 agreement and the August 8, 2024 agreement between the City and Civic Plus LLC regarding the city's website. Item Q, resolution number 7655, entering into agreement with GovStack for the software licensing to be used for the city's website. And item R, resolution number 7656, reappointing Crystal Whedle to the Beatrice Civil Service Commission. Anybody want anything clarified or pulled off?
Item M.
Item M.
As in Mary.
Okay. We will pull that off. Anything else?
No, not really.
All right, Mr. McLean.
I move the items listed on the consent agenda with the exception of item M, be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
And your vote, please.
And I believe that council member.
I'm going to abstain from.
Item F.
Item F.
Okay. And your vote, please. And that passes six, zero.
Oh, Eckoff, you're still off.
There we go.
There we go.
Seven, zero. All right.
I move that item N, list now the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
I don't have a problem with it. I'm not going to vote against it. I just want to, I, just public meeting, I want everybody to understand that there's still asbestos on the site. So just, this was the stuff out of the building, but the asbestos that is in the roofs of the building that are still standing and the ones that we've knocked down or the fire took down, there's still asbestos in there. So somewhere along the line in here, we're going to have to pay to have more asbestos removed from the site, and I didn't want the public to think that this was the final bill for it. So that's, that's all I had.
Stay out of there.
Yeah, stay out of there, yeah.
And so that gets separated at demolition time and hauled away, is that how that works?
So yes and no. So we've, they're separating some of it now, the stuff that's down, and some of it we can take to our landfill and some of it we can't take at our landfill. So yeah, Tobias, would you just explain which ones we can and can't take? It's easier.
There are different kinds of asbestos. Mostly what's left there is so encapsulated in tar that it doesn't, it doesn't become airborne, that's usually what people are concerned with, with asbestos. Right now, most of that stuff can end up at our landfill, and so as demolition occurs, you'll see the demolition contractor tear off the kind of the top of the roof, separate that from the rest of it. That will end up getting bagged and taken out to our landfill like any other asbestos project, and then demolition will occur on the rest of the building as a normal building demolition.
So yes and no?
Yeah, just kind of curious.
Hopefully, hopefully when the buildings come down or just come all down in one big piece, they just cut it up, take it out to Orlando. So very good.
Anything else? Your vote, please. That passes seven, zero. We have a couple of public hearings tonight. One of them consisted for the 1 and 6 rear road plan. That has been postponed until November 17th, 2025. We'll move on to the next hearing, which is a public hearing for the purpose of receiving the semi-annual report of the Citizens Advisory Review Committee as provided by the local Option Municipal Economic Development Act, RRS 1943.
Yeah, so your CARC hearing, if you looked at your packet, you see it has about $313,000 in cash. That was done prior to our payment to Hoppy for $300,000 for the paddock Kensington in downtown. So if you take 313, you minus $300,000 payment, right? You left about $13,000 in the LB40 funds is roughly what's available at this time. There are, if you'll note in there, Landmark Snacks has paid off their loan in full, and so I believe you guys have already taken action to release all of the collateral we have on that one, but that one's been taken care of. And you have seven loans currently outstanding, and all of those are current on their payments. So other than that, things are moving along well.
Questions from the public. Seeing none, let's close the hearing.
Move the public hearing be closed at 6:09 PM.
Second.
Your vote, please. And that passes seven, zero. All right, the next public hearing is for the purpose of discussing the draft Brownfield Grant application for the cleanup and the remediation of the Dempsters' site. Hearing is now open.
Yes, so as everybody's well aware, the Dempsters' property, we're looking to apply for another Brownfield grant on that site. As part of that application process, we have to have a hearing. We have to have a draft application, which is done, it's on our website. You may go to our website, it's at the top of the banner there, you can pull it up and take a look at it, there's an option there for you to provide feedback as well. But what we are looking at in this application is the area outline in green there that's on your map. The reason being is a couple of things. One, you can only receive a Brownfield grant once per parcel. So you want to make sure the parcel is sized such that you can utilize all of the grant funding that's available. This year, the grant funds that are available is a maximum of $4 million. And so when we did our due diligence, trying to look around on this particular grant application, what we found was inside that green box, which is mostly the main buildings that front Highway 77, demolition cost and remediation of two feet of soil came out to be $3.9 million. So that's how we came up with this, and we did not use the county parcel idea because also the county parcels run through half of buildings, and we didn't want to try to tear down half a building and mess with that one. So that's how we kind of came up with this map here. As also as part of our grant application, we have to have what's called an APCA, which is an alternatives cleanup, alternatives Brownfield cleanup analysis. We've had one done a couple of times as we've applied for a couple of different grants. It lays out three different options for the site, and this time we're talking about the site inside that green box, so those parcels right there along Highway 77. Option one was to do nothing, right? It's always an option, it's not a good option, and so if you read the APCA, it says, don't do that option. Option two is to demolish the buildings and then remove two feet of, and put a two-foot cap back on the property. And it has to do with what you want to use the property for post-demolition. If you want to use the site to have an enclosed structure on there, so a house, a commercial building, anything of that nature, you have to do 15 feet of soil remediation. And that number is estimated for just inside that 3.7 acres there at just under $19 million. So the APCA says, that doesn't sound like a viable option. So let's pick option two. We remove two feet, you're at that $4 million number, and then you go back with a park on top of there, so it's an open area is what we're looking at on this particular site. So that's what we have going on right now with this particular grant application. Application's going to be due sometime late November, early December, depends on when the government opens up again to take applications, and you'll probably hear back about six months after applications are sent in.
Not a tough decision.
Okay, so the Dempsters' committee, Gary, who's not here, and Dwayne, and Alex, and I, and so I want to touch on a couple of things, but I wanted to call out that everybody on the committee as well. Yeah, definitely Tobias, not doing anything is not an option. But I, I want everybody to understand that this piece is the piece that you see that's adjacent to the street, but the site is actually a little over 17 acres. But we talk about all the time, all the time we talk about an 8.3 acres, that's where the building's set. And so this is just a part of that 8.3. So, but I wanted everybody to understand that we do have a plan for the site, as Tobias touched on. It's a reuse strategy in alignment with the, with these plans. We have to touch in the natural resources. We include drinking water, surface and groundwater, wetlands, plant and animal habitats, agriculture resources, and recreational resources. That's in this grant application. This aligns with the Gage County 2018 and 2028 comprehensive plan. The whole idea, as it says in the application, is to have Beatrice into a safe and community-focused asset. This property sets just four blocks from our down, the downtown core, and we're, we're in the process of spending a lot of money to improve that. And so the properties in the downtown Beatrice serve as a catalyst for local economic development as it says in the grant application. The property's not suitable for private or commercial residential, Tobias explained that. We have had a question about it, about the two-foot cap, because the majority of the building that you see sits right on the ground, it sits on a slab. But as we've all toured the site, there's two basements, there used to be the cafeteria and used to be below that is, was the, the changing area for everybody. So that brings into question how much dirt you really have to put back in to that because it all has to be removed. The proposed park, so there's, the, the plan that we have is a park, in a park setting. The proposed park will include fitness course, dog park, canoe dock, Big Blue River, soccer fields, picnic areas, playground, concessions facility. None of that is set in stone. That may or may not happen, but it's in our grant application. But I, if the people go to the website and they read through this and they say, oh, that's what's going to, that's what they're going to do there, and then we don't end up doing that, that part's not set in stone. That's, that, that may or may not happen. The park itself, though, will act, will enhance the attractiveness of the area, the surrounding properties, increase the town, downtown tax base, may encourage future investment in nearby commercial and residential properties. And so, and the last part of this that's in the application, I really want to emphasize so people know that the city of Beatrice has already committed $2,500,000 towards cleanup of these activities to date. And that's if I, correct me Tobias if I'm wrong, but that's the amount of money that we've written a check for. So like the fire back in May, or March, rather, all the overtime we spent, everything we did, that doesn't, that's not included in this. So we actually already have a pretty sizable financial.
You want to read that number off again?
Yeah.
$259,400.
That's better.
There you go.
What'd I say?
It's $2,000.
Oh, $260,000. Quarter of a million plus.
We knew what you meant.
Well, but I appreciate, I appreciate you correcting because it's public and I didn't want to be wrong. But anyway, we have, we have more money in it than that, but that's how much we've written a check for. So doing nothing, as you can tell, is a huge financial drain, so fingers crossed. And when we filed for this before, we got a little one before, I, when I talked to them, I thought, oh, we're going to know in January. And Tobias kept telling me, you're not going to know in January. It says, it says in here, you know, first of the year. No, it was May. He was right. So anyway, if you, if you've got any questions, you can always call me or one of the members on the, on the committee, but this information's on the website. So thanks so much for the time.
Anybody else up here? From the public. Seeing none, let's close the hearing.
Public hearing be closed at 6:17 PM.
Your vote, please.
Second.
Sorry, got a little quick. Your vote, please. And that passes seven, zero. Okay. Next public hearing is for the purpose of considering adoption of Plan Modification 25-3 to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number 13 is known as the Beatrice Commons Redevelopment Project.
Yeah, so Beatrice Redevelopment Project. You pulling the map up, Aaron?
Yeah. It's probably easier for you, but I'm attempting.
All right, so, if not, so this, again, if anybody doesn't recall Beatrice Commons, this is the area that's going to be south of the Good Samaritan Center, just east of the YMCA. It's kind of the parcel we're looking at. And then you have the other, scroll down there, Aaron, if you can.
This.
There you go. Nope, keep going, yep, perfect. This is kind of the latest site plan, if you will, that we have for this particular development. What it includes is about a, an apartment building ends up being roughly 35 units. They're still figuring out the exact dimensions of the building, a few of those things. And then there ended up being 16 townhomes. All of the townhomes, the idea of the developer is to sell them off, and so obviously with the townhome, you own one half, your neighbor owns the other half, but that's what's planned on there. These would all be public streets, and so there would be connections there, but we'll try to make sure that we've got all of the other utilities put in there. The final assessed valuation that we received right now is about $8.3 million estimate when everything's done. Would you generate about $1.2 million in TIF for this particular project? I anticipate that they're looking for groundbreaking to occur in the spring at this point.
If I, and if I read that right, total public-private's like 14 mil.
Yes.
Yep, $14 million. This has kind of gone under the radar a little bit. This is a huge project. It really is.
In a great location. So Tobias, when we, when they first presented this to us, when I looked at the plans, all of the utilities, including the electrical, all be underground. Is it still that way?
Yes.
I think that's.
That's the way to go.
That 100%, that's the way to go.
Yes, that, that'd be, that's the intention.
Yeah.
Other comments from the public? Seeing none, let's close the hearing.
I move the public hearing be closed at 6:19 PM.
Second.
Okay. Your vote, please. And that passes seven, zero. Move on to resolutions. The first resolution is number 7657, executing any and all documents necessary to apply for the 2026 United States Environmental Protection Agency Brownfield Grant Program for Site Cleanup at the Dempsters' Site.
I move the resolution number 7657 be passed and adopted.
Second.
More discussion needed? Seeing none, your vote, please. And that passes seven, zero. Next resolution is resolution number 7658, adopting Plan Modification 25-3 to the redevelopment plan for the redevelopment area number 13 known as the Beatrice Commons Redevelopment Project.
I move the resolution number 7658 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Need anything else here on this one? Now, the only thing that I might add is after hearing about, and thanks to, and congratulations to Chad Lotman and Chomps, we certainly are going to be in a position where we do need housing. We continue to figure out that, that nut to crack from an economic development standpoint. So I think some, a lot of nice things are lining up for, you know, a number of, of places now. Granted, these are, the apartment complex are 55-plus.
Yes.
So maybe not a lot of employment there, but the townhomes, I do believe, are market rate, so there is there, so. Okay, any more comments up here from the public? Your vote, please. Passes seven, zero. Okay, resolution number 7659, executing the general release and any and all documents necessary to release and discharge Michael S. Schaefer and Shelley R. Schaefer regarding their Beatrice Downtown Revitalization Improvement Program Loan Agreement.
I move the resolution number 7659 be passed and adopted.
Second.
As part of our downtown revitalization grant that we have currently, it's open, Mike Schaefer was awarded roughly $30,000 to make repairs to the marquee on the south side of the road there. He got ahold of me last week, indicated he does not wish to pursue these grant funds any longer, and so we're asking you tonight to release then this grant that he had received and then all the other corresponding collateral and everything else we had lined up with it. He has not been dispersed any money, and so those dollars just go back into the pool that we have available. We've reached out to DED to see how they'd like us to handle that. The timeframe's getting a little short, trying to get another project run through with all the environmental reviews we need to check, but obviously we have some other projects that could use the additional funds, and so we're trying to make sure that we, we walk that line with DED, see how they'd like to move forward with it.
Any discussion needed up here from the public? Your vote, please. And that passes seven, zero. Resolution number 7660, executing the loan agreement promissory note, personal guarantee, and deed of trust between the City of Beatrice and Paul E. Richters and Ann L. Richters for a direct loan in the amount of $44,791 from the city, CDBG Downtown Revitalization Grant 23-DTR-002.
I move the resolution number 7660 be passed and adopted.
Second.
This is 509 Court Street. Ann just purchased that building from the Woodwards, and so one of the things she needs to do is make some repairs to the building, which is eligible under this particular grant, so that's why she's getting about just under $45,000. You may ask how we come up with these numbers. Again, people have to go get bids, you have to get a minimum of three bids, and so then what we do is we average those three bids together, and our current practice has been we award 60% of that number. We can go up to 75 under the grant, so that's how we come up when we do the math, that we get $44,791. And then when somebody like Mr. Schaefer doesn't go through with it, we have some additional funds, and that's how we can move some projects back up to maybe get to that 75% funding, depending on DED approval. This loan is set up like everything else, it's a five-year forgiveness, so again, if she doesn't keep the repairs, she would have to pay the money back to the state, well, we'd have to pay it back, and this is a way for us to get it back from her. I don't know how that happens when it's repairs to an actual structure, it's kind of difficult to do, but we've got a way to protect ourselves if that were to happen.
Any discussion needed up here?
Maybe just a comment, I'll do it quick, Bob. A year ago, that corner looked a lot different. So I'd like to congratulate Ann, congratulate the Hydose, and congratulate Claybaugh Pharmacy, all three of which took properties, and I'm pretty confident that they're going to improve them quite a bit from what we've been trying to fight the last five, six, seven, eight years or something. So I'm very, very happy that that corner got done the way it got done. So thanks.
Anybody from the public? Not? Your vote, please. Passes seven, zero. Okay, we're going to move on to an ordinance and then come back to a resolution. This ordinance conveys real estate owned by the city to Armstrong Rentals LLC.
I move the said ordinance be given number 25-36. The title there be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That passes seven, zero. Ordinance number 25-36 by number only the first time, 25-36 the second, and 25-36 the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 25-36 be passed and approved.
Second.
Yeah, so Armstrong has, or Joe Armstrong, Armstrong Rental has been talking to us for a while about purchasing what was lot 30 out in Industrial Park. This would be on Industrial Park number two, so it's just behind his current building that he owns out there. There's the pond that sits there. If you recall, we had some issues, could we need some stormwater detention? That was not designed in when the initial ground was platted out there 20 years ago, and so we hired JEO to do a study to help us kind of determine how much area that we need to make sure that the other lots then did not have issues with flood control in the future if they got built out. We were able through that process to carve off some ground, roughly about an acre that's adjacent to Joe's property, and so we've kind of had an agreement out there. The purchase price in this particular case is $22,255. That's one half of the study that JEO did to determine how much ground we need to have, and then $14,000 an acre times the number of acres he's buying, which again, just under one, and so that's how you come up with the purchase price. Closing is set to be on or before, I think, the end of this year, or they should move fairly quickly after this meeting.
Any discussion needed up here from the public? If not, your vote, please. That passes seven, zero. Now we'll go to resolution number 7661, executing a contract for sale of real estate with Armstrong Rentals LLC.
I move the resolution number 7661 be passed and adopted.
Second.
The resolution has authorized us to sign the contract. For some reason, we sell real estate, we have to have an ordinance and a resolution.
Anybody from the public? Not? Your vote, please. And that passes seven, zero. Move on to public forum. The purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Anyone like to speak for the public forum? Seeing none, we'll move on to discussion reports. I actually have an item on here. A lot of times I don't, but I guess I would just like to clarify a few things about the merger group. As everyone knows, they have had a press release that the Main Street, the Chamber, and Engage are working on a merger plan. I think the people that are working on that committee have worked very long and very hard for over a year. I think as you look, the fact that we're down a number of directors, it probably is a plan that they need to consider very carefully and move forward on. And you might ask why I would comment on this merger. Well, first of all, I want to make one thing perfectly clear. The merger is their decision. It is not a governmental decision. Our piece of it, of course, as everybody knows, is our Engage contribution, typically of $150,000 a year. We had the opportunity to meet with the merger group to lay out what we felt was important, and we made it perfectly clear to them that it was their group. We asked them, at least in the makeup, to have three representatives from each one of the groups, so that was fair. We asked them to continue to have a member from the city and a member from the county, so that would be one and one. One of the things that's important to the committee is to make sure that the person that is leading that committee is the chair, does a great job, so we did want some input on that. The other thing that we asked for, which I think is always a good plan when you're giving somebody $150,000, is we wanted to make sure that there were some metrics built in when they get going in July of 2026, so that a year from now, from then, we can kind of see where they are with their progress. You know, for instance, one of those could be growth, one of those could be new industries, and there's going to be metrics, and there's going to be how do you meet a number of those metrics? And so we felt that was a good plan. I think through the course of a number of meetings, and I think the announcement of I think through the course of a number of meetings, and I think the announcement of the county commissioners, I think there was an impression that this body wanted three representatives as well. That is not what we want. We want it to be their organization, we don't really want to micromanage their organization, we want them to be a strong organization, and we're still going to have our financial funding there. Now, if you look from the city and the county's perspective, we certainly don't have to agree, but we will have to work through how that works, because I know to this date, they've already appointed three people to that committee. And so I know there's going to be future meetings before we would appoint anybody else. You know, last, last meeting, we did appoint Mike McLean, because he's been on it for a couple of years. We need to see where our position is as we move forward, but I want to make it perfectly clear that number one, it's not the city's decision for them to move forward, because they can do that without us. And number two, that we support that decision. Number three, we don't want to micromanage that position. And number four, we felt one strong representation person was there. I think if they wanted more representation there, I think you could always appoint either a resource person to attend, or you can have an ex-official person there that has the knowledge that would be needed during several of those meetings. And so that's why it's on the agenda. I just wanted to clear the air in the public that that was our stance as we were moving forward, and is still our stance. It does put us in a little bit of a delicate situation trying to work with the county, because they've already gone down a different path that in my estimation leads to some micromanagement. And I don't want to do this to this group, because I will tell you, when we met with the group, we had what, Ryan, Ryan Traunich, with Samantha Thompson, and Craig Zarbinicky. Those guys have put a lot of time into it, and they made a lot of sense. And when they laid it out to us, and they took a look at our framework, as we called it, I think they were glad that we put something forward that they could work with. I know there's going to be another meeting in November, I'm not sure what's on that agenda, because it is their group running it, but I know we will be there, and we will probably express the exact same thing that I'm expressing now, is that we don't want to micromanage. We don't want to, I mean, you know, God forbid, none of us want to sit around the table and put together the bylaws for their group. That's not where we're at. And so now we'll have to figure out how we manage the difference that we have in these two, because like I said, you know, we certainly aren't going to micromanage or control the county commissioners, and if that's the way they want to go, we have to figure out how we move forward in a very thoughtful way that also supports the merger group. So.
Appreciate all that, Bob. The, the thing that, that, that I know you said, but people might have missed, because I think that when the county talked about it, this is not a government entity.
Right.
We, we don't control them. We simply give them funds, there's some parameters with those funds, but this isn't a government, this body, Engage and, and Chamber and Main Street are not government entities, they're not controlled by us, they're simply, part of their funding comes from us. It's, no, that's, that's the long and the short of it.
Exactly. Good point. So that's where we're at. Jim, any questions for us? I know you have some concerns, and I don't blame you.
Just you're listening.
Okay. Hopefully that does make sense where we, you know, I think that's just where we need to be in this situation. All right, thank you very much. We will go into executive session tonight.
I move the city council go into closed session at 6:34 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss contract negotiations.
Second.
Your vote, please. That passes seven zero.